See, he has really messed with my brain now. I understand how he thinks.
Okay, that's for the start.
What answer, was that one, which one?
Ha.
And I want to know.
No, you don't.
My work here is done.
Yeah.
Alright, so I call this meeting back to order. Do we need a motion?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we change the order of the agenda to move item seven up to be discussed now, given some travel constraints of Dr. Richardson.
Oh, yeah. Second.
We have to vote on it, right, Mr. Blair?
Yes, second.
Okay, please vote. Alright, that carries four to zero.
And there you go, okay.
Okay, just as a brief introduction, we had a great press conference today at noon with Dr. Richardson and before your, for your consideration as a council tonight is your approval of his employment agreement with the city.
Okay, are there any questions?
None, welcome.
Move that we adopt the resolution?
Second.
And I'll just for public information, the, um, the information starts on page 154 of the agenda if you hadn't had a chance to look at it. Yeah, and have any questions?
I'd just like to make a comment. I just, I know I'm not alone, but I'm just thrilled that Mr. Richardson is joining the city of Charlottesville. It's clear that you have a deep and abiding love for the downtown area and the whole city, and that it kind of feels like you're coming home. It's a wonderful thought that this is a place that already feels like home to you because we're very, very grateful that you're coming here.
You're welcome, once again.
Alright. Okay, so is there a motion?
We are, now we're voting.
So.
And Mr. Signer's not here, but he did say that he would be certainly voting in favor of this as well, but not here yet. And we moved the agenda.
Alright, that carries four to zero.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much.
Safe travels.
Safe travels.
Alright, next on the agenda, we have a public hearing resolution on the 2019 bond issue.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Chris Cullinan, I'm the city's director of finance. Staff is requesting approval of a resolution authorizing issuance of up to $17.75 million of general obligation bonds to support the city's capital improvement program. All of the projects to be funded by this bond issue have been previously approved and appropriated by council as part of its budget process in the current and prior fiscal years. Approximately $10.5 million of that debt is for general government purposes, which are detailed in the memo, such as public schools, transportation and access, public facilities, parks and recreation. The remaining approximately $7 million to support the city's utilities, water, wastewater, stormwater. And just to be clear, the utility portion of the bond issue will be supported by those utility rates, not general tax revenues. The bonds will be repaid over the next 20 years with annual principal payments. The bonds will be sold by a public offering through a competitive bid. The resolution authorizes the city manager to accept the lowest true interest cost bid on the bonds. Earlier today, city management held conference calls with Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's to discuss the city's financial condition and to obtain ratings on these bonds. I would characterize the calls as very positive, very encouraging, and we look forward to hearing from in early May when the ratings will actually be delivered. We anticipate retaining the AAA rating, the highest rating given by both rating agencies. Per state code, the public hearing, which will follow my brief presentation, has been advertised in the newspaper and the sale information provided. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have at this point. We also have a public hearing as well.
Okay. Were there any concerns from the rating agencies?
I would say no. I think in many ways, the rating agencies are obviously very familiar with the city as we issue every year, and so they're very up to speed on both our economy and our financial condition. In the case of one of our agents, we had some new analysts, so we had to maybe go a little more in-depth than we have in the past, but that's always a good thing. We obviously like to tell our story and have a good story to tell. And so I would say that there were no issues or concerns raised by either agency during the phone calls.
Okay. Alright, thank you. So I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on the series 2019 bond issue?
Ms. Bogart, I heard you want me to speak.
Alright, so we'll close the public hearing.
So, Madam Mayor, if I may, I just make one point of emphasis from Mr. Cullinan's presentation, that is, you know, as we are fresh off the preparation and approval of the FY '20 budget, one of the things that I emphasized with you all is that we're coming on the general obligations, you know, the, on the general funds side, the general government for $10.5 million. And so I just want to make sure that we understand that while the CIP had that issued, where the authorized but not issued debt of over 37 million, that the 7 million that makes this 17.5 is fully funded by the rate structure that's approved for the utilities, and so it really is 10.5 from your regular CIP.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, I'd like to also publicly acknowledge and thank Chrissy Hamel, Senior Budget Analyst. This work requires several months of work involving both city staff, bond counsel, rating agencies, financial advisors, and she's the one who pulls all of that together every year. And so I'd like to publicly acknowledge her and thank her for her work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job.
Okay, is there a?
I move we adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of the general obligation public improvement bonds to the city of Charlottesville at an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $17,750,000 to finance the cost of certain public improvement projects and providing for the form, details and payment thereof.
Second. Alright, please vote. Okay, thank you, that carries four to zero. Next, we have an ordinance amend Charlottesville city code 15-131 motor vehicles and traffic first of two readings.
You're welcome, Pete.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. What we have before you tonight as a first reading is a change to an ordinance relating to the issuance of special parking tags. Historically, these have been issued to members of the Charlottesville Volunteer Fire Company, or the Charlottesville Fire Company as it's known, the Charlottesville Admiralty Rescue Squad, and as really a legacy from many, many years ago, members of the Alamo County Volunteer Fire Community as well. The issue was brought to me as, that came through the police department as a concern about the amount of time and energy that the parking enforcement officers were spending trying to determine who should have and should not have a parking permit. So we worked through a process of trying to determine who was the most appropriate part of the workforce, the volunteer workforce, that had the greatest impact on actually delivering city services. And we settled on a membership category with the Charlottesville Rescue Squad, who still to this day provide 70% of the emergency medical services transport service in the city. So the proposed language change is to remove the Charlottesville Volunteer Fire Company members who do still respond on calls, but they do so as a member of a staffed, fully staffed Charlottesville Fire Department engine company. Also not responding from home, they're not leaving their place of business and getting in their vehicle in a parking spot and driving to the fire station anymore. That's an older model that a city of our size and sophistication and risk just doesn't work anymore. And so basically what we would be left with is issuing permits to full active members of the Charlottesville Rescue Squad who are doing at least one 12-hour shift a week. And we think that's a reasonable place to land. So be happy to answer any questions.
Sounds like inefficiency makes sense.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
So this isn't voted. So this, I have a question about the U's. So this is used for their personal vehicles at any time? Is that what?
Yes, it's their personal vehicles.
Right, so it's a sticker that goes on their squad license plate, it says Charlottesville Rescue Squad on it, and it has a little sticker on it so that the parking enforcement officer knows that they're allowed to park in a city spot.
I think the principle behind it, Madam Mayor, and I think, you know, this is a great efficiency for us because there are literally hundreds of people on the list prior to this change that's being proposed.
I think we're less than 100 if we stick with full active members.
And the idea is somebody could be downtown, need to park their vehicle and be called out on a call, and we wouldn't want to penalize them for being in a two-hour parking spot or something, or in zone parking.
Is there communication about if it's not a situation like that?
What is communicated to the permit holders?
So for instance, if I come down here and I'm going to pay my gas bill, I don't throw, you know, I don't put my city council tag in the window. You can drive some parking, you know, issues with parking a lot.
The sticker is affixed to their squad tag, so it's either they have.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out if it's, I mean, still communicated at the, in leadership team meetings or whatever to just be mindful of.
What the appropriate use of the privilege is.
That's certainly something we can discuss with the leadership of the rescue squad.
To be clear, these aren't city staff people traditionally who've had this privilege. This is folks who are volunteers out of the rescue squad at the bypass station. And so I can't speak to what the message has been, but we can communicate that it's an expectation that obviously this is not for people to attend Fridays after five, for example, and park wherever they like. It is, you know, in the event that they're serving the public on a rescue call. Is that your intent with the question? Yes, ma'am.
Alright, thanks.
So we'll just put this on the consent agenda.
Right.
Next, we have the rezone of Lehman Street residences, tax map 58 parcel 289.2 and 358E, subject properties, second of two readings. And just for the public information, last week, this was, April 1st, this was on the consent agenda. And so this is kind of reverse order, we're just correcting and that, so we're actually, you know, just wanted to make sure that the public had this information.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this, as you said, is a rezoning petition for properties on Lyman Street. The two properties are currently vacant. One property is zoned R1, and the other one is zoned PUD, is part of the Belmont Lofts PUD. This application is to zone those properties R2. And there's an accompanying special use permit, which is the next item on your agenda. Planning Commission discussed this matter at their March 12th meeting. There were several people in support of it at that meeting that spoke from the public, and the Planning Commission recommended unanimous, made a recommendation, a unanimous recommendation for approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. A representative of the applicant is present as well.
Like, three of us were at that meeting. I feel really clear and understand, and I support it.
Yes, I support it.
Any other questions? Well, we're gonna vote. Just a second. Is there any information that you would like to share?
If you need any information, I'm happy to give it. I don't need to take up your time.
Okay. Alright, so is there a motion?
So we do both?
I would do them separate.
Right, right.
But in succession.
I move we adopt an ordinance approving a request to rezone two parcels fronting on Lyman Street from R1, single-family residential, and PUD Belmont Lofts Plan Unit Development to R2, two-family residential.
Second. Are any further discussion? Alright, please vote. Alright, that carries four to zero.
And?
Do we need to do the, yes?
On the SUP.
Okay, so the, there's a resolution for a special use permit for Lyman Street residences, tax map 58 parcel 289.2 and 358E, subject properties first of one reading.
I don't know how much you want to talk about. So as I stated in the last previous item, this is a special use permit for an infill, special use permit on the properties you just rezoned to R2. This allows for reduced lot sizes, reduced setbacks, and reduced road frontage that would allow the applicant to create three lots on the property as opposed to the existing two when they resubdivide. R2 zoning, based on the lot sizes we're talking about, the, could have up to two units on each of those lots. And the Planning Commission also recommended, unanimously recommended approval of this item as well on March 12th. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Well, Rory wanted more units, but Rory wanted more units, Mr. Stolzenberg.
He did.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that it's also stated that these are allowing accessory dwelling units.
Correct.
And was that in the property? Because there was some discussion whether it would be in.
Internal accessory units.
Yes. Alright.
Alright, I move.
So he said that were their internal accessory units was the comment from the... Are there any other questions? Alright, so is there a motion?
I move we adopt a resolution granting a special use permit for infill development on two parcels fronting on Lyman Street.
Second. Alright, please vote. Alright, that carries four to zero.
Did you have a question?
I'd just like to say it's a beautiful project.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Alright, next we have the update on proposed changes to alleys and paper street closing policy.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
City manager, members of the city council. What we have before you tonight, it's about policies related to alleys and paper streets. If you recall, in July, if you recall, on July 16, 2018, the city council directed staff to take a look at existing alley policies and review it and then develop a set of policies to guide the city's alley acceptance and evaluation going forward. As a result of a council directive, staff set up a working group composed of representatives from appropriate city departments, public utilities, NDS, fire department, public works, city authorities office, and, and parks and recs. And we also had representatives from, from Place Design Task Force and by compared committees. We worked for about six months and had about 10 or 11 meetings. We also had a couple of field work as part of data collection and the survey of potential alleys in Belmont. Belmont was selected as part of the council directive for the project. And after we finished the evaluation and the inventories, we developed a set of benefits designed to create some kind of criteria for evaluating the alleys and then scoring them and accepting them or denying the request. Following that, we created a map identifying all the alleys. And then we also, as part, the map is part of the staff report, we also denoted the alleys and then the 10 alleys we looked at as part of the process. After that evaluation, staff decided to use the design support system, which is currently being used by public utilities as part of their survey evaluation system. Most of the alleys we looked at, we are used by property owners for rear access to their properties for parking. Some of them we are used, there are some, couple of them that had ADUs for the dwelling unit, accessory unit behind, but still accessed, access through the alleys. All the alleys we looked at, with the exception of two of them, one had a dead end which is right by downtown Belmont, had a dead end. And the other one had a tree smacked in the middle of the alley. Except for those two alleys, the rest of them were accessible by bike and pedestrians. Some people were also using that for bike riding. Seven of the alleys we looked at had increased access for affordable housing, because there were ADUs, couple of them had ADUs, and then there were a couple that, about five of them that had potential for accessible dwelling units. And then there were coupled at, about five of them that had potential for accessible dwelling units. And, and then during the rating system, we used the benefit to develop the rating system. And if an alley had a good advantage in terms of development of affordable dwelling unit or accessory building, if you will, in the rear of the building, then it's rated higher, you know, so we gave it .25 percent. .25 as part of the rating system. And then if you look at the staff reports, there is a table there which had the rating system, the benefit to the far left, and then the rating system, numerical rating system at the top, and then the weighted scores. You know, you can see that the ADUs had a very favorable point system. So the reason why we developed it this way is to remove subjectivity in terms of evaluation. So if there is a request made to the city council to close an alley, this is how going forward we are going to evaluate that. We're gonna take these six variables into consideration, six or seven variables into consideration in terms of the evaluation process. And then if an alley scores, if the application scores anywhere between 1.5 and 3, then, then the city will recommend, if it scores between 1.5 and 3, then the alley would be recommended for not acceptance or denied. The application would be denied if it's rated.
Right.
That, that's basically provide a framework for the city council to make informed decision in terms of acceptance or denial of alley applications. And then it brings also a measure of order to staff in terms of the evaluation. The other thing we are asking the council tonight, there are two things in terms of recommendations. One is to reaffirm that council will retain the authority, you know, in terms of approval of applications that comes in. And the process didn't change, but what we added was this baseline threshold for measuring the, the applications once it's submitted.
So, Rock, I just have some questions.
Yeah.
I really like the direction this is going, I just want to make sure I'm understanding how you use this scoring rubric. So that, that when you have that line of the row criteria, three, two, one, those are numbers of points that you get?
Yes.
Okay, so if you've got an alley that, that increases rear access for potential ADU.
Yeah.
And in the first box, it meets it, it gets a three?
Yes.
And then it gets a weight to, well, times .25?
And then after you finish, you add it up.
Well, and with that, doesn't that, that diminishes its value, right?
No, it doesn't.
Wouldn't you multiply by 1.25?
It doesn't, because the maximum you can get is three points as part of the rating.
Oh, okay, so I see.
Yeah, the lowest you can get is one point.
Oh, I can, all right, all right.
We spent a considerable amount of time.
No, I think this is really very helpful. And it, it is a lot more objective.
Yeah, we, we spent considerable amount of time during the data, data collection because all the members of the working group, we split into two. The first working group went through the data collection, then a different group went. Then we compiled the two, set of information collected. And then we arrived at the, the benefits and then the criteria for measuring it. And the essence was to make it real simple in terms of evaluation. But what we didn't look at is the cost of, assuming, the cost of the alleys, they are, assuming that we wanted to improve the alleys and stuff like that, you know. So we didn't look at the cost of engineering it or bringing it, making it palatable for pedestrian and bike usage. You know, the reason being that that wasn't part of this. If it was something that we have to look at then in the future, if there is a request, maybe by, by compared committee, you know, to convert an alley.
Or if an alley winds up, if we really start promoting the ADU.
Exactly.
We'll start getting more ADUs on the garages and the alleys, in which case you're gonna have to start improving the alleys. So the city would have to take them over for maintenance.
Yeah, at that point, then we have to go into detailed discussion in terms of cost for making it.
But right now, this is helping us stop just giving them up.
Exactly.
Thank you. I like it.
Yes, this is intended just to be a report in that we now have this tool.
Yeah.
We can have a resolution on your consent agenda at your next meeting.
That sounds great.
If the council approves this policy.
That sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good work, thank you. And to the whole working group, yeah.
Look at your short memos.
All right, well, so, any other business?
No.
So, can you come on Wednesday?
Huh?
The meeting on Wednesday, I'm a little freaking out, is it maybe just you and me coming?
No, Wes is gonna be there.
You call me, Mr. Robinson? You call me?
So I think the three of us will be there.
Okay, all right, just make sure you write it for him.
I thought he called me.
So we'll open it up to the matters by the public, is there anyone here who would like to speak? Our closing matters by the public, meeting adjourned.
Thank you, the 49.